Okay.
Wait.
Oh, I said, recording in progress. I thought I could go.
Yes, yes, yes. Just one moment. And I'm just initiating the live stream to the board's Facebook page. And the live stream is initiated.
Okay, thank you. So before we get started, I really would like to thank everyone for attending tonight's meeting. And I'm going to advise that unfortunately, we had to change that format at the very last second. And under the emergency executive order due to health concerns and that and the possibility that a quorum would not be reached. And we didn't reach that last month. The meeting is being recorded and livestreamed via www.facebook.com or BrooklynCB11. And we're doing this because we have to transact business. And Marnie's initial, you know, initial take was that many people were not coming and I couldn't have another non-quorum event. So we will study this next month at our meeting and we'll look at it. But there is some action the board has to take to ensure that we can run business. So we'll discuss that next month. And we'll go from there. So we'll go from here and let's see. So Roy, if you would write, lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Appreciate it. There is a public hearing tonight. And that public hearing is on a draft of community board's capital and expense budget recommendations for the fiscal year 2024. Is there anybody from the public that wants to speak? The board can speak during our meeting.
So we would just ask you to use the raise hand function.
Yep, yep, yep. If you're going to talk about just the capital, you know, cap, this public hearing, we are going to have a public portion when we open the meeting.
I see no hands raised.
Okay, so hearing none, I'd like to have a motion to close the public hearing. Okay, Jeff, seconded. Seconded, I'll just pick a person. Michael, seconded. All in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions? I think I'm going to do it this way because it's hard for me. Everybody say yes at once. I'm only going to take the opposed. When we're on Zoom like this because that'll help everybody else to be in the affirmative. This is not a public portion of the meeting where the public speaks and the board does not. So if anybody from the public that has to address the board, now is your time. Use the raise hand function, please.
Ethan Nash?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, so I am representative from the Brooklyn Borough President's Office and I wanted to introduce myself. This is the first meeting that I will be attending. I'm just basically taking notes on the meeting. If you guys have any questions for me regarding the Brooklyn Borough President's Office, you can ask me at the end of the meeting. Until then, I thank you for allowing me to speak.
Great. So Ethan, I'll just tell you something from Community Board 11. You have, you have been a quick learner. You do things very quickly here and you did it very quickly. So thank you.
All right. I like that, too. I appreciate it.
You got it. Anybody else from the public?
Yes, Renee Mitchell, would you unmute yourself?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Renee Mitchell and I'm in South Brooklyn. And I'm the Executive Director of a nonprofit called Breaking the Cycle Drop Corp. And I'm also part of the National Commission of Homeless. And I deal with the homelessness in South Brooklyn. Okay, I also act as a community activist for the neighbors in the community. And it's a couple of topics that I would want the community board to address that keeps coming up in the sewer. The sewer in Bath Beach, okay, the toxin, we don't know what we're breathing in. And the news said today that there's polio in the sewer water in Brooklyn and Queens. So I want to know what the community board can do to address this because people don't know what they're breathing in. Another issue is the garbage. It's massive garbage on 86th Street from Bay Parkway and 86th all the way from 18th Avenue and 86th Street. And I've constantly been working with Marlene, the district manager, okay, to address these issues, but it's just constantly, constantly garbage. And now we have rodents in the neighborhood. The second issue, okay, is the homeless. Starting from 18th Avenue and 85th, 86th Street, all the way down to Bay Parkway and 86th Street. And numbers of everyday numbers of homeless people are encamping, hoarding on Bay Parkway and 86th Street. Okay, is also homeless with mental health issues. Okay, I witnessed one man get slapped in the face with food. Okay, while I was doing outreach on 20th Avenue and 86th Street. So it has to, something has to be done, a safe haven, okay, for these people to get them off the street, to exercise kindred law. So it can be safety, not only for the homeless that's suffering, but also for the community in the neighborhood.
All right, we will discuss this during the meeting and thanks for bringing it into our attention. Anybody else from the public?
Hannah Wienerman?
Hi, everyone. This is Hannah from Congressman Jerry Nather's office. I have a few just quick updates. So I think back in August, there was an announcement about student debt relief plan that's coming out. So the application to apply for that student debt relief loan forgiveness plan is supposed to be released in October. So hopefully they'll be released by the end of the month, but that'll be on studentaid.gov. Additionally, if you have a public service loan, if you're part of the public service loan forgiveness program, there's a time limit to change the program itself that basically will allow borrowers to receive credit for past periods of payment that repayment that would have obvious, excuse me, otherwise not have qualified for the public service loan forgiveness program. So that is, that application is online. You need to submit it by October 31st, 2022. And again, that's at studentaid.gov. The other thing that I just wanted to flag is the open enrollment period for Medicare Health Plans or Medicare Advantage Plans Part C will open October 15th. This is the time where you could join, switch, or drop a program. That is open from October 15th to December 7th. And you can find more information at Medicare.gov. If you have any additional questions, you can call our office at 212-367-7350. Thank you and have a lovely evening.
Thank you, Hannah. Anybody else?
Nancy Lulu?
Good evening. Thank you, Marnie. Good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well. I just wanted to extend greetings on behalf of DA Gonzalez to everyone. Just wanted to share that last week we held a Hispanic Heritage Month event at the Williamsburg Hotel. Thank you to everyone that came out to celebrate. October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Somebody you know is most, is likely experiencing, experiencing domestic violence. So whether you see it or not, there's help always available round the clock at the DA's office. We have a Domestic Violence Bureau, 718-250-3300, Brooklyn Family Justice Center, 718-250-5113, and NYC 24/7 Domestic Violence Hotline, 1-800-621-HOPE. At the DA's office, we're always looking to partner and collaborate. So if you want to collaborate with us, please reach out to me to visit the Brooklyn DA's website at brooklandda.org to learn more about the Brooklyn DA's work, resources, press releases, and upcoming events. And as always, if there's something you would like to address with our office, you can call the Action Center at 718-250-2340. And thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. Have a lovely evening.
Anybody else from the public?
Yes. Tambe John?
Hello, good listening. Hi, I'm Tambe. I am the branch manager for the New York Library. And the library would like to let you know a couple of things. We're currently providing legal services at BPL. Immigration consultations, legal services, and information sessions are currently available with Action NYC and Immigrant Justice Court at the Brooklyn Public Library. Through the Action NYC, a legal team can provide comprehensive immigration legal consultations. And they can help arrange citizenship, green card renewals, DACA, TPS, and more. If you need any disinformation or consultation, you can call 718-230-2007. Or you can go online and email at immigrantservices@brooklynlibrary.org. We also like to let know that the library is also providing public with vinyl collections that you can now borrow. Teen and adult cardholders can check out up to three records at a time for a period of three weeks. Unfortunately, records cannot be placed on hold in advance and you must visit the central library in person to borrow and return the records. We are also offering cannabis small business series programs right now, Intro to Cannabis Business Employment. You can attend one or all of the in-person events that are presented by volunteer lawyers to get information on resources and support to help you start a small business in the cannabis industry. For more information, you can call 718-968-7275. And at the library, we are currently offering our weekly programs. On Wednesdays, we have a crochet program for adults, 7-1. We also offer movies for adults on Thursdays from 2:30 to 4:00. And these are contemporary movies, the latest released movies on DVDs. We also offer Brainy Baby programs for zero to three years of age on Wednesdays, 11 to 12. We have Anime Book Club for teens on Thursdays, from 3:30 to 5:00. And if you just need more information at our library, New York or our neighboring library, Hy Law, or for any programming information, you can look at our brooklinelibrary.org website. And that's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Tambe.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Brian Gross?
Hello, guys. Brian here from Councilmember Alexa Aviles's office, just announcing some things we have coming in the future. First is the DEP Community Forum. If your home has been affected by flooding, you can join us for a virtual forum with DEP where they share some information. You can complain to DEP all you want. It's Tuesday, October 15th, 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM. You can contact me for the link. I'll put my email in the chat. Second is our Virtual Civic Series. It's our monthly civic series. I apologize. It's held virtually. It's on Thursday, October 27th, 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM. And it's just a discussion about New York City's budget, what the budget is, what it means for us, and how community members can get involved in the budget process. And last but not least is our Open House. This is a chance for you to meet our team, meet the council member, come to our office and see what we do. It's Thursday, October 20th, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at our office, 4417 Fourth Avenue here in Brooklyn. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Anybody else?
Yes, Frank Fontana.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Frank Fontana from the Engagement Department of the Buildings. Just two quick announcements. One is the Buildings After Hours, which was formerly Customer Service Night. So every Tuesday night from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM, any property owner, business owner can visit the Brooklyn Borough Office if they have any questions about projects, violations, looking for information on their property. They can come in, speak with one of our staff to get the information they're looking for. Secondly, is the, the end of September was announced, the 90-day commission. So the administration is performing a 90-day review of the Buildings Department where we can, we work with nonprofit groups, government officials, trade, industry, trade groups where we can make it, recommend improvements to the Buildings Department, improve customer service. Two things that we immediately did was create the small business service team connecting with small business owners that are looking to do projects in their, on their businesses. So we will help facilitate and guide them on those projects. And secondly, is the major development project unit for more high-rise and larger buildings. So that's the two things that we created initially, but there'll be more to come as we, as we go forward and at the end of the review. And just lastly, it is the Tomby Year is getting called out. Just remind everybody to check their, there are smoke alarms, carbon dioxide alarms, make sure the batteries are changed. And if you have other questions come up, feel free to reach out to me. My number is 718- Oh, I'm sorry, 718-395-9135. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mary Coretto? Mary, would you just unmute yourself?
Maybe she put her hand up on the state line?
No.
No, okay.
No.
Let her know where it is.
Yeah, Mary? If you just, well, I don't know wherever it is on, on what she has. If you would just use the microphone button on the bottom and just click unmute.
She's still muted.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'm prompted, okay, so.
Type in, type in her question and we'll, we'll answer it as we can.
She can hear you and then we'll go back around and see.
Anybody else?
Yes, Patrick Connolly? If you would just unmute yourself?
Yes, I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, well, I represent a community group over on 16th Avenue and Bay 13th Street in the South End. And I'm here, I want to hear what's going on here and what happens here. I'm kind of new to this. But we are interested in improving quality of life and lowering the crime rates that we see in the area. That's our, that's our main interest. And that, that's what I'm hearing. And I'm hearing one of the guests that spoke talking about these homeless people. And that's definitely an issue that we're very interested in. And we don't really want them wandering around on our block, which infrequently does happen, and we don't want it to increase. So that's something we're concerned about, too.
Okay.
And that's about it.
Okay, thanks, Patrick.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm going through the list.
Okay.
So Tierra Zupa, I apologize if I'm mispronouncing.
No, that's all right. Thank you so much. I am a community member here in Bensonhurst. And I would just like to know what could be possibly done with the parking issues specifically in, around my house. Parking is extremely difficult. Usually there's a school right by me and the school buses take up multiple parking spots. Are they allowed to be there? Also, a lot of commercial vehicles parked in the area and they just take up an exorbitant amount of parking space. I'm also new to this, so excuse me if this isn't the correct procedure.
It's the correct time and we'll talk about it, but welcome to the club of living near a school.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, anybody else? Thanks for your coming. We'll, we'll answer during the meeting.
Susan Swann?
Hi, it's everyone seeing me here. I cannot see myself.
No, but we can hear you.
I don't know.
They joined.
Okay, Assemblyman Colton also here. If you cannot see us, we are in a Zoom meeting. I don't know what happened.
One moment. We'll promote him. Okay. If you turn on your camera.
You turn on your camera. It's, it's the one that says video. Just hit it. It should be an X through it and knock out the X and we'll be able to see you.
Want to say that? I don't know why my camera. Okay, okay, okay.
There you go.
Assemblyman Colton is here. You want to speak here? No, 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 they cannot.
It's not his time to speak. He speaks during the meeting.
Okay.
Elected officials speak during the meeting.
Okay, so if you want to.
Okay, so next, Bill, you're going to speak during the meeting.
Yes.
Anybody else?
I am just looking. No.
Okay, so hearing that, hearing none, I'd like to close the public portion of the meeting. Any objections? There's no objection. So Marty, you picked two people to be, you know, first and second. Okay. Okay, so I'd like to now have a motion to accept the minutes of June and September, seeing that we couldn't do any business last month. So can I have a motion for that? Okay, Jeff's got his hand up. Seconded by, okay, Alan, seconded. Is there anybody opposed or have to add anything? Hearing none, it's carried unanimously. So we passed the minutes. We had two public hearings, one from last month, one we had just earlier tonight. So we had the public hearing on adopting the, the draft of the capital and expense budget for the city for 2024. No one spoke at the public hearing. Is there anybody from the board that wants to address anything? If not, I'm going to call a question. Okay, so I'll call a question. Anybody opposed? All right, carry unanimously, money. Last month, we had a meeting and we just couldn't vote on this, but it was fully explained. There was a public hearing regarding a special permit application to enlarge an existing single-family home contrary to the side lot yard requirement. The report was that there was no objection to this. No one came to speak about it in the negative. So hearing none, first we'll put a motion on a board and see if anybody wants to speak about it. So can I get a motion to accept the committee's report?
Yes.
Okay, and seconded? Okay, Sal seconded. Okay, so any other discussion on this? This is from last month. Okay, so all in favor? Any opposed to this? Nobody's opposed. Nobody has to abstain. So moved, so carried unanimously, carried money. I'm not going to call on someone, Bill Colton, to address, to address us. So Bill, you're on, and then Ari, you'll go after Bill.
Okay, thank you. Basically, there's a number of things that have been happening in the community. The biggest issue which everybody inquires about is going to be the proposed homeless shelter at 137 Kings Highway. And the community is still very opposed to it. We have had a number of developments. The deputy mayor, Phil Banks, had visited the community, my office he came to, and I did on another matter, actually. But I took the opportunity to discuss with him and to show him this homeless shelter that's being proposed. And I think, you know, he certainly was aware, made aware of the fact how strongly the community feels. And, you know, he saw, for example, the site across the street, which we have been told would offer the possibility of affordable housing if, if that is able to be done. And the homeless shelter would be an obstacle to that. Also, in 125 Kings Highway, we pointed out to him that they were hoping to lease commercial space on the first floor to a childcare center, which certainly is something that could be very needed in this neighborhood. Parents who, you know, both of them are working, they need childcare agencies and groups and centers to be able to provide quality childcare to their children. That is directly, it would be directly next to this proposed homeless shelter, and that would be a serious problem. We also did have a question about some rats were coming out of the lot. There was some debris in the lot of 137. We did contact Department of Sanitation and it looks to me like they have, it has been cleaned out by the owner. So they did at least make an effort. It's still, there's some debris there, but I think they basically made an effort to clean it out. There were black bags of garbage dumped along the fence. And the neighbor next door actually saw a rat come out from under the fence. So we did report that and it looks like that's being addressed. We are going to be having a rally on October 30th at 2:00 PM. That's a Sunday. And we're in the process now of putting that together and discussing it with the other community organizations. And we hope to, you know, have some definite plans on that happening October 30th at 2:00 PM, right at the site of the shelter. And on the other lighter side of things, my office every year has a little Halloween treat for neighborhood children. And from on October 31st, which is Monday, Halloween, we are going to have, the staff is going to be setting up where they have some little bags of goodies, candies, and some other, some actually, some small toys that will be included in those bags and we'll be giving it out to neighborhood trick-or-treaters. And so parents who are going on Kings Highway and doing some trick-or-treating on Halloween with their children, they can stop by my office and, and we will have those little trick-or-treat bags for them. Sometimes even the staff dressed up in Halloween costumes of, you know, so it's a fun kind of a thing that, you know, maybe this Halloween we need after the couple of years of COVID where there were very restricted activities in terms of Halloween. So we're going back to that tradition that we had had for a good number of years before, right in front of my office at 155 Kings Highway. And that's basically about it. We want to, you know, keep moving the community. There's going to be some food giveaways that have been working with Dr. Law. We've been trying to work with some community organizations that get food. We had a food distribution last week at Dr. Law's Center. And over 200 people came and got boxes of food. And we're going to be doing another one on October 21st at Marlboro. At Marlboro, you know, housing in front of their management office, there's going to be a food distribution. And what time is that, Susan?
One o'clock.
One o'clock. So one to three or so, we're going to be having a food distribution at Marlboro together with the Marlboro Residents, Residents Association. So a lot of things are happening and hopefully as we get more and more away from COVID, we'll be able to do more and more such activities for the benefit of the community. So thank you. And, you know, we look forward to future meetings.
Thank you, Bill. Appreciate it. We're going to call on Councilman Hagan now, Ari.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. I would like to say that I would, I would like to thank everyone who joined me and thousands and thousands of people to imagine Columbus Day Parade. And I'm proud as council member, I secured $50,000 for the Columbus Day Parade and other great activities of Federation of Italian-American Organizations. Also, I've worked with Community Board 11, Marnie knows about it, to make sure that 86th is okay. I know it's a lot of fishes and we heard today, but like we brought sanitation department commissioner. We numerous times sent wildcat services to clean up specifically on 86th Street. And they will continue to do so, but of course, like more should be done. But again, they're doing this day in, day out with sanitation department and wildcat services, trying to make sure that 86th Street is clean. And they will do even more. Same story with homeless people. The Department of Social Services sent their workers, I know, breaking ground there. I was there myself. I'm breaking ground, send the person there. Several times, homeless people saying, you don't want to go anywhere. They're not going to shelters. And sometimes it's very difficult, but we will continue. And sometimes it's very difficult, but we will continue this effort. I understand it's a decision. We are not gonna stop on this. Also, last week, I'd like to mention people complained to me about Gary Baldi Playground on Eighteenth Avenue, Eighteenth Street, specifically about mobile toilets outside of the Gary Baldi Playground. And one of the reasons why uh, we need this mobile toilets because uh, very long process of fixing electrical systems inside bathrooms. So I repeated, talked to Parks Department, and at this one, this is an update. So this mobile toilets now moved around the playground and still at the Justin Park. And there'll be maintenance of them, not three times a week, but five times a week. Uh, and also, uh, I talked to Mayor's office, one point five million dollars were obtained now. Uh, Parks Department cannot say they don't have money to fix all electrical systems inside the bathrooms at Gary Baldi Playground, top of the timeline. They say next year, it will be fixed and bathroom will be opened at the Gary Baldi Playground next year. But for now, we moved around the playgrounds, the mobile toilets. I also would like to announce that November seventeenth at six thirty P M, at Hill Center at eighteen seven eighty-seventh Street, will be, my office is hosted town hall. Bensonhurst Beach Town Hall, November seventeenth, six thirty P M. At Hill Center, Eighteenth Avenue, Eighteenth Street, we will distribute flyers about it even more. What I'm saying is going to town hall about sanitation, transportation problems. And D O B is invited, of course, sixty-second precinct, all kinds of issues related to Bensonhurst and Best Beach. And I will talk even more in November about it. Please come and ask all possible questions. And uh, thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Ari. Okay, the other public officials on the phone, right? I mean, on on the Zoom.
Yeah.
Okay, so I will go into the uh, district manager, uh, my chairman's report. Uh, we received from the Department of City Planning and Environmental Assessment Statement for the proposed rezoning of twenty-five, twenty-five, Sixty-Fifth Street. That is the site where Day Hill Funeral Home is located, was located. The applicant is requesting to rezone the area from an M one dash one and R five B district to a R seven dash two slash C two dash four district. What would happen here is that the zoning would permit the creation of a thirteen-story mixed-use building consisting of one hundred and fifty-five units, local retail, medical office, and one hundred and sixty-two parking spaces. Now, recent development trends, including as-of-right development and proposed discretionary actions, will collectively add one thousand one hundred and sixty-nine residential units and eight hundred and seventy-five parking spaces in our area. While we recognize the need for housing, and and we also need Department of City Planning to conduct a comprehensive review of the district to assess the need for additional core services. You're putting all of these people in here. You, okay, you created parking spaces. What about traffic? What about the all the core services, police, fire, hospital? Um, and we have to look at what the infrastructure needs are in order to support this growth. You just can't be saying, hey, just go and grow and grow. Yeah, housing is needed. Uh, we have highlighted this need in the capital and expense budget recommendations. And Marty is contacting our new liaison at the Department of City Planning to discuss and invite them to meet with our planning and zoning committee on this issue. Uh, so we'll keep everybody apprised of it and posted. Uh, but we certainly have to look out for being overpopulated and not having any services. Uh, Election Day is fast approaching. Tuesday, November eighth, polls are open six to nine. Texas says you're right as a citizen. Vote whatever way you like. Uh, and you can get an absentee ballot online or by mail, October twenty-fourth. Uh, and you're and find your polling place via W W W dot vote dot N Y C. Uh, before I turn it over to Marty for her report, uh, I know we've talked about the homeless here. Uh, as you all know, it is a major, major problem, and because we are a sanctuary city, we are getting inundated with even more. Now, the homeless we already have here, they're all our neighbors and have been our neighbors for many years, so we might not, you know, we're not taking care of them. It's easier to take care of people coming off buses, that you're gonna shake their hand, not to say that the immigrants don't deserve everything they're getting. But we're not even addressing our own homeless. And so I think the mayor's gotta start to do a more comprehensive plan of it all. And I think our councilmen said it more tremendously right. You can have a group of homeless on eighty-sixth Street, you can have them on Bay fourteen Street, wherever. The difficulty that one has is they can refuse to go to a shelter. So even if they had a shelter in this community, they could refuse it. All right, and and most people enjoy being out on the street. I mean, not enjoy it, they 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 rather do that than go into a shelter. That's that's really what I meant. It's it's they've developed that lifestyle. It's not a great lifestyle. They wish they did have a roof over their head like their home room. So to answer that question that came up during the public portion, homelessness is an epidemic here in this in these five boroughs, and it's only been made worse by the thirty-plus thousand people that have flooded our city to the sanctuary city. So the mayor and his people have to do something better here uh, to address it, or else, you know, gotta, you know, I I went to a play just a couple of weeks ago, right? And you know, while while the sun is up and you're just going into the play, there's more police than you want to count. You try coming out at a quarter or eleven and go down Eighth Avenue. You're accosted every other doorway. You know, it it's so so it's a terrible, terrible situation here. And and those people are very unfortunate, and a lot of them are mentally ill. And need and need help, and we haven't, and we've forgotten to really put resources into mental health. So so there's a, it's a very complex issue and a complex problem. Again, exacerbated by what we're taking in on the immigrant population. Uh, terms of garbage and sewer, you know, the councilor mentioned it. And maybe Marty, you wanna jump in, but?
Yeah, no, absolutely. I have it as part of my report.
Okay, okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn it over to Marty.
Thank you. So I I will begin with the issues brought forward at the public portion. We'll we'll begin with um, the sewer odors on Bath Avenue. I believe Ms. Mitchell was referring to the area of Bay Sixteenth and Bath Avenue. I've been working with her and and many residents. Um, as a matter of fact, we have identified it as number four on our capital priorities to call for um, the funding um, to study and plan possible design faults of Regulator nine A located on Bay Sixteenth Street and Bath Avenue. That's where these sewer odors are coming from. You may recall years ago. We've been discussing this issue for way too long without resolving it. Um, without D E P resolving it. We have identified where it's coming from. We just don't know the cause. So we're on a combined sewer system. That means the rainwater and and sewage. Uh, rainwater and sewage mixes together in the same pipes, and when you have a heavy rainfall, we have a regulator at Bay Sixteenth Street that directs the water either to the sewage to Owl's Head or out to Gravesham Bay. And um, we don't know what the issue is. Some time ago, D E P claimed that it was the cover to the regulator, and they repaired that, and it hasn't resolved it. I am going to urge people, because it's not an everyday occurrence. It comes and goes. Please, please, please document it through three eleven or reach out to me so that I may document it because we need to have a paper trail on it. Um, I will reach out to them once again and have them come down and look. I know they put sewer odors, uh, sewer socks in the catch basin, so try and prevent it, but I I don't think that's the issue, but we'll continue to work on that. Um, regarding the commercial trucks, I will reach out to the person that spoke at the public portion to get the location and work with the sixty-two precinct to address it and see what buses are there. Um, just so you know, though, state law permits buses to park overnight within the building lines of a school. So, um, there won't be anything that we can do to enforce it, but we can address the commercial vehicles. Um, I'm just looking at my notes, just bear with me.
Garbage, garbage.
Garbage, that's my report. I'm moving on to my report. Um, so in response to the community complaints regarding unpassable sidewalks and displays set up and sold on the street on eighty-sixth Street between Bay Parkway and Twenty-third Avenue, the Department of Sanitation over the summer conducted two-street obstruction sweeps in July. So they actually confiscated merchandise there, issued summonses, um, and they came back again after a couple of weeks to revisit, because we know that a lot of these businesses, not a lot, we have some bad actors. I mean, there are businesses up there that are doing business, but we have a few bad actors, particularly in the area of Bay Parkway and Twenty-third Avenue that have taken over the street. We have seen some improvements on the sidewalk obstructions. Um, and then we had two multi-agency operations on eighty-sixth Street to address the vendors um, that were located up on Bay Parkway and eighty-sixth Street, blocking sidewalks, crosswalks, mailboxes, bus stops, and the train station entrances. Um, they moved them. Uh, summonses were issued. There were confiscations. And the Department of Sanitation has issued five hundred summonses since January first up there. So they're out there, they're enforcing, and and they're doing what they need to do. However, of course, there's always more work to do. And two of our local nonprofits, the Brooklyn Chinese-American Association and the Federation of Italian-American Organizations have been awarded funding through the New York City Department of Small Business Services under the Avenue N Y C Grant Program. And this program awards grants up to three years and dedicates funding for a full-time program manager, assists grantees in completing a commercial needs assessment, and financially supports projects informed by that needs assessment. So while there's a lot of work to do, um, but there is some progress. It won't be overnight. Um, we've saw uh, conditions really deteriorate over the pandemic. We have a new administration and a different focus to get back up and on our feet. And I look forward to working with the C B Os as well as our Commercial Development Committee to meet with them and provide whatever resources and support that we can. Um, and I also wanted to thank Councilman Kagan, Anastasia from the mayor's office, and all of our community and agency partners who are working with us to try and tackle this issue. So when you see an issue, please call three-one-one or our office, so we can get that out there, and we'll continue doing the same. Um, on June fifteenth, the Department of Transportation presented, I know I'm really far, but we haven't met, so just bear with me because I want to share the information because it's important. Um, presented the safe routes to transit eighty-sixth Street Capital Project. The project spans from nineteenth Avenue to Twenty-Fifth Avenue. In case anybody forgot, I'll give you an overview, which is a vision zero priority corridor. The project focuses on bus bulbs and E D A accessible waiting areas, curb extensions, new benches, bike racks, and wave finds in at select locations. So the Transportation Committee had some concerns regarding the proposal to consolidate the westbound nineteenth Avenue bus stop with Bay Twentieth Street, which was previously removed to the advocacy of some of our board members. Um, and it was removed due to safety and operational concerns. D O T has discussed those concerns with the Department of Design and Construction and New York City Transit, and they agreed to maintain the nineteenth Avenue bus stop, and will construct a bus pad and bus bulb at that location. So I think that was really great. There were lots of concerns about how the pedestrians and the movement and the lighting at New Yutrit and um, Bay Nineteenth. So we were able to remove that. Um, the project also includes D E P infrastructure upgrades designed to alleviate flooding on Twentieth Avenue um, between eighty-sixth Street and Bath Avenue, so that'll be included as part of this project. And they will upgrade, replace storm sewers at eighty-sixth Street and Twenty-Forth Avenue and Twenty-third Avenue, and replace the combined sewers on eighty-sixth Street between Bay Twentieth and Nineteenth. Um, the final design will be completed in fall twenty twenty-three, and the target date for construction start is fall twenty twenty-five with a two-year duration. Um, Seventeenth Avenue pedestrian bridge update. I don't have a real update other than D O T announced that on Monday, the seventeenth, they will continue working on the bridge. They there will be overnight double lane closures weeknights. Um, beginning the seventeenth through November third on the westbound lanes. Um, we have requested additional information if if the demolition was approved and how they're going to make up that lost time, and whether they will have a waiver to the holiday embargo where no major construction work can be performed the day after Thanksgiving to January second, and we're waiting on their responses. And I'll share that once we receive it. Leaf collection. I know everybody's waiting to to put out their leaves and turn them into compost. Um, in District eleven, we will have two collections. You can put them out in curbside and curbside in paper lawn leaf bags or online bins after four P M. The evening before Sunday, November twentieth and Sunday, December fourth. Um, we have lawn and leaf bags, plenty. If anybody's interested, stop by the office, say hi, we'll give you a package. You can bag them up, and we can make compost. Um, there will be a volunteer-led cleanup hosted by Taste of Waste New York City on Bay Parkway at the Water's Edge on Sunday, October twenty-third from ten thirty to two thirty. Volunteers are welcomed and and needed. You can email tasteofwastemyc at gmail dot com if you're interested or wanna learn more about what they do. I'm sure they'll be happy to have anyone that's interested in helping. And finally, the Department of Design and Construction notified the board that they are designing non-standard pedestrian ramps on West Fourth Street and Kings Highway, Seventy-Sixth Street and Eighteenth Avenue, Quentin Road and West Second, Sixty-Fifth and Avenue O, and Twenty-First Avenue in Propsey. And and complex ramps are when you have a corner that they can't put in a simple ramp. You may have um, a traffic signal or a light pole there that makes it difficult, so it goes under a different contract, but they're moving along on that. And that's what I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, Monica. Comprehensive report. Uh, okay, is there any old business? Is there any new business?
Yes, I have new business. This is Sonia.
We got it.
Thank you. Hi, um, this coming Tuesday, October the eighteenth at seven thirty, the sixty-second precinct community council is gonna meet at El Centro at eighty-seven eleven um, Eighteenth Avenue. So if you can join us, please do so. This is the opportunity to address any concerns you have to the um, commanding officer and any of the neighborhood coordinating officers as well. Also, uh, the N C Os will be having um, a meeting as well for Sector C um, at El Centro on Saturday, October the twenty-ninth at twelve thirty. They're located again at eighty-seven eleven Eighteenth Avenue. And October, the thirty-first, Monday, we're competing with Assemblyman Colton to get some kids from three thirty to five. However, though, Assemblyman Colton's staff will, some may be dressed, our police officers will not be in costume. So if you can come out for some candy, please do so. Uh, the precinct is located at uh, Bath Avenue and Bay Twenty-Second Street, and that's on Monday, October thirty-first, from three thirty to five. And lastly, but not least, um, on Wednesday, November sixteenth, from eleven to two, the sixty-second precinct in with uh, with our sponsor, the Bensonhurst Rehabilitation Center.
the Sixty-Second Precinct in with, with our sponsor, the Bensonhurst Rehabilitation Center and hosted by El Chantro, we're having a breast cancer awareness brunch. Tickets are twenty-five dollars. They're posted on the chat. Just remember that try to schedule your breast cancer exam because early, early detection saves lives and men as well as women do get breast cancer. Though some people don't realize that. And so, and the lastly, I also want to thank Marnie. She's been so helpful to me and helping me out doing my flyers and doing such a beautiful job. So Marnie, thank you so much. We really appreciate your help. Your tech skills are fabulous. Thank you.
Oh, my pleasure. And Sonia, if you would send over the events to me, I would be happy to include it in our newsletter, which goes out tomorrow.
I will do that this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. And also, if anybody wants, I put it in the chat, if anybody wants to be put on our email list for the Sixty-Second Precinct Community Council, I put down our address, our email address. Just send us your info and we'll put you down. Thank you.
Thanks, Sonia. Anybody with new business?
We have Dr. Law and Jeff.
Hi, you, can you hear me?
Jeff and Dr. Law.
Yeah, we have a sort of announcement. Okay, we have a Saturday, you have, we have a Saturday adult S class and adult English class and youngster Chinese class at I S ninety-six, ninety-nine Avenue P. The class is on Saturday, every Saturday from ten A M to twelve P M. Anybody want to learn Chinese, please come to me. They don't have to pay anything, okay? Because a lot of people told me that, Dr. Law, I want to learn some Chinese. Please come, okay? I S ninety-six, ninety-nine Avenue P, Saturday, ten A M to twelve P M. Okay, thank you.
Got it, I'm mute, Jeff. I'm mute.
No, I just realized that. Eighteenth Avenue is, is another problem area like eighty-sixth street between Sixty-Fifth to Seventy-Fifth Street, all right? There is no garbage receptacles on each corner. There are at Sixty-Fifth Street and that's it, all right?
We did that, Jeff, let, let me tell you, I give you some ancient history, okay? When we had receptacles, Dan, if you go to Thirteenth Avenue, I promise that every, unless you're going to get picked up three times a day, sanitation says they'll pick up three times a day, then you can have receptacles. If not, all of these people in, in, in apartment houses or whatever, they come and throw their garbage. They don't want to keep it in the house. So you notice all of these cans are not from the stores that are there. So now you're seeing the store, all the store stuff, right, it goes, it, it goes on the ground, but the storekeepers are supposed to keep it clean.
Well, that's, that's, that's another issue. It's so much, yes.
We just received a formal request from residents from Sixty-Fifth
Right.
Sixty-first to remove the remaining.
Yep.
Just so you know.
All right, because they, yeah, that's where they all are. It's in, in the Mabelton area, all right?
They don't, they don't want them because.
Okay, but now, now we have all, all the garbage on eighty, on Eighteenth Avenue, which nobody bothers to clean up. I mean, that, that's another area that.
Men up there.
We'll set enforcement up there and, and people will, will have to clean up after themselves, but.
And we can also send, sanitation has been very helpful. We had Community Affairs come down three weeks ago to do outreach and education because a lot of the garbage that we're seeing, if I can just jump in again, a lot of the garbage that we're seeing out on eighty-sixth street in the commercial corridors isn't just residential. There seems to be an issue with the private carters and the times that they're coming or not coming. And, and what happens is garbage attracts more garbage. So you will see the commercial garbage out there and then people just dump their residential garbage on top of it. And, and it's a challenge. So we're doing some outreach and I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to send them up to that location.
This, this is also the sidewalks, the garbage on the side, you know, the papers, all the litter, the litter that's on the sidewalks.
They have to clean, they're responsible.
The stores, right, the stores are not, they're not keeping up with the sidewalks, all right?
Problem, well.
In fact, it's, right, right.
It'll get up there and usually if you get a ticket or two, it's gonna be really clean.
And, and also there has to be stricter enforcements of these e-bikes and, and bicycles on the sidewalk. I mean, they're, they're, they're left and right. There, there is.
So the difficulty is that we have here, Jeff, there's not enough enforcement of it. I don't know, I think anybody, I think anybody on this call will tell you that at least once in the past year, you almost got hit on it, on the sidewalk by a bike.
I, I, plenty of times I almost got hit. Now, you know, I'm, I'm afraid for my wife because she, she had a, she had a hip replacement, you know, and then she, she walks, I mean, she gets hit and she falls down, it's all over. I mean, I, I, you know, I, I can't say that.
Well, we'll, we'll let Captain Chen know that he should be.
Okay, seven, seventy, seventy, seventy-one oh five, seventy-one oh five, Eighteenth Avenue is an e-bike store, all right? He's got all his bikes all over the sidewalk where you can't walk.
Got you.
All right, that's the issue.
Enforcement will go up there.
All right, I mean, you know, and then people in the, in the crosswalks, they park in the crosswalks. Nobody's just ticketing them.
It's just enforcement.
It's a trick. There's, there's no enforcement on this side of, of Bensonhurst.
The, the Sixty-Second Precinct was up there and visited those locations and.
They'll do it again. They'll be happy to give some tickets, especially towards the end of the month.
Yeah, I wish, I wish they would. I mean, it's ridiculous.
Robert, you still want to say something? Thanks, Jeff. Okay, Robert just put his hands up, but he didn't want to speak, right?
No, his hand's up.
Yeah, but he's not speaking.
Robert, I'm still here.
No, he went on mute now, so he doesn't want to speak. Okay, anybody else? Hearing none. Have a happy Halloween and see you next month. Rob bless.